Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. We have established our quorum. If the members will take their seat, we will have our invocation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Dr. Darlene Pierce of the House of Prayer where the Holy Spirit leads and we follow. I like that. She is here today as a guest of Councilman Harity. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
All right, we can be attentive to the Word of God in prayer. Father God, grant us this day wisdom, knowledge, and revelation in this meeting to listen and to hear each other's views. Grant us respect and patience with kindness collectively on each topic. Let peace be among us, that this session will have a positive, motivating, productive outcome. Now unto him who is able to keep us from falling and to present to us faultless, the only wise God, our Savior, be glorified, majesty and dominion and power both now and forevermore. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, so much for your spiritual guidance this morning. Counsel Did you get your picture?
No.
Thank you. And again, Pastor, thank you so much for being here this morning. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, October 19th, 2023, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 19th, 2023 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly as second that the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, October 19th, 2023 stand approve all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those oppose, ayes have it, and our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, on behalf of the members, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. And our next order of business is our sunshine act motion. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on the calendar prior to our session today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters are considered today may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be published or to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Bass may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the council session. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those oppose, ayes have it, and motion carries. And our next order of business is communications. And the Chair requests that the Chief Clerk read the messages from the mayor and any additional messages that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body. A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1511 through 17 South 55th Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Housing Authority aid deed conveying fee simple title to 2342 through 48 North 27th Street, also known as 2748 North 27th Street, assesses 2342, 2344, 2346, and 2348 North 27th Street, 2704, 2706, 2708 West York Street, and 2709 West Arizona Street in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 3rd Councilmanic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. I would ask the Chief Clerk to read the legislation that's being offered by our members today.
Councilman Phillips offers a privilege resolution recognizing the 10th graders at Hill Friedman World Academy for being featured in the HBO documentary Stand Up and Shout: Songs from a Philly High School.
Today's calendar.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a privilege resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating Elizabeth A. Murphy for her exceptional leadership at PICO and her subsequent retirement after an astounding 16-year career.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I rise to recognize the presence of Elizabeth Murphy at today's council session, and all of our friends from PICO and Doug Oliver and Jose Agüero. In her absence, Michelle Sanchez, Keith, Michelle Bates, Ramona Risco-Vinson, and of course, Mike Nacenzio. But I would be remiss not to mention our friend who I'm sure we all miss dearly, Ed McBride. But I wanted to recognize, honor, and congratulate Liz Murphy for her exceptional leadership at PICO and for all the work she has done over the years to really help us move the needle on energy issues here in the city of Philadelphia. I remember working with her as a young legislative aide on the original energy benchmarking legislation for our commercial building stock, and she was just phenomenal and exceptional during that time and really helping us to do that work. So I wanted to take a moment to recognize Elizabeth A. Murphy and congratulate her on her retirement from PICO. Liz and our friends from PICO, please stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Today's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers a privilege resolution honoring and congratulating the Champions of the Week, the artists of Legacy Reclaimed, a Seventh Ward tribute for their efforts in promoting and showcasing the history of the Black residents of Philadelphia's historic Seventh Ward.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers four bills and four resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark and ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for indemnification and defense by the city in connection with claims made against any registered community organization arising directly out of the lawful participation by such an organization in zoning matters and related land use process.
Verdict committee.
And on his own behalf, Councilman Jones offers an ordinance authorizing basic utilities and services use on a certain location within a section of East Fairmount Park bounded by the right-of-way of the CSX Railroad, Gerard Avenue, and 33rd Street.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance authorizing basic utilities and services use on a certain location within a section of West Fairmount Park bounded by Winfield Avenue, extended Belmont Avenue and Parkside Avenue.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Queen Lane, Wissahican Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard Extended, and Henry Avenue, and to amend Section 14524 of the Philadelphia Code entitled FDO, 4th District Overlay District, and make related changes.
Verdict committee.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, Councilman Jones offers a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for indemnification and defense by the city in connection with claims made against any registered community organization arising directly out of the lawful participation by such an organization in zoning matters and related land use process.
Verdict committee.
And a privilege resolution honoring and celebrating the life and memory of our friend and colleague, Robert "Chris" Goy II.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution confirming the reappointment of Matthew Stitt. I'm sorry, a non-privileged resolution confirming the reappointment of Matthew Stitt to the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority.
Next week's calendar.
And on his own behalf, Councilman Jones offers a privilege resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold public hearings exploring the effects of recent pharmacy closures, including Rite Aid, in the city of Philadelphia, and the impact this has on prescription access and vital pharmacy health services for senior citizens.
This week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers two bills entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Dickinson Street, 23rd Street, Cross Street, and 24th Street, and an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Wharton Street, Newkirk Street, Reed Street, and 29th Street.
Those two bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilwoman Brooks offers a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing Lori Tree Queen Maple Hayes on the occasion of her retirement for her vision, leadership integrity, and unwavering dedication to curating Philadelphia's parks, trees, and greenery for over her 42-year career of service to the city of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing-
Mr. Decker, hold on. You want it for this one?
I'll just put them all together.
I'm sorry. Please proceed, Mr. Decker.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing Uhuru Furniture and Collectibles and the African Peoples Education and Defense Fund for defending the rights of the African community, providing affordable furniture and home goods to Philadelphians, providing jobs, job training, and volunteer opportunities, and committing all profits to supporting economic development and self-determination programs for Black communities across the country.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I'm introducing two resolutions honoring remarkable Black leaders whose vision, commitment, and profound impact on Philadelphia over the past several decades will be a lasting legacy in our city. First, I would like to honor Lori Tree Queen Maple Hayes. Like many of us who grew up in row homes in Philadelphia, Lori learned, yearned for green spaces in her youth. She studied agriculture at Saul High School and horticulture at Penn State and Temple before securing a job as a ground maintenance worker for the city of Philadelphia. She rose through the ranks to become Philadelphia Director of Urban Forestry, and after 42 years of service caring for and expanding Philadelphia's green space, she is retiring this year. Throughout her career, Lori has insisted that green spaces are not a luxury for some of us, but a necessity for all of us. She has nurtured and protected countless trees in our city and inspired countless Philadelphians with her knowledge of horticulture and a love for urban forestry. Because of her leadership, we have a vast network of healthy trees in our city, providing beauty, vitality, clean air, and precious shade. Her work to encourage, educate, her work to educate and engage all of us, especially young people, in the science, beauty, and benefits of trees will be a gift to Philadelphia for decades to come.
You can give her a hand there. Thank you, Lori.
I am also introducing a resolution honoring Yeru Hu Furniture and Collectibles and its parent organization, the African Peoples Education Defense Fund. I would like to thank my friend and new colleague Jay Young for calling my attention to the sad news of Yeru Hu's furniture collectibles will be closing its doors at the end of this month. Over the past 29 years, Yeru Hu has furnished the homes of countless Philadelphians and donated all its profits to support economic development and self-determination programs for our Black communities across the country. Yeru Hu is a chair of Philadelphia institution known for its affordable, upcycled furniture, as well as its commitment to the history and liberation of the African community. While we mourn the loss of one of Philadelphia's unique treasures, we look forward with hope and gratitude to the continued work of the African Peoples Education and Defense Fund, including the African Independence Workforce Program, which aims to reverse the negative economic impact of the colonial economy and the prison system. Today, I am honored to presenting this resolution to the current board president of the African Peoples Education Defense Fund, Oni Zimi Yeshe Tleli. Can you stand? Thank you all for your service, and I really do appreciate honoring you today. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Guardier.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to add my appreciation for the service of Lori "The Tree Lady" Hayes. She has given so much to our city. She's helped our neighborhoods to plant, steward, and care for so many trees across the city, and I think it's really important that she served in this role as a Black woman. We know that our neighborhoods are about 20 degrees hotter on average than other neighborhoods in the city. So a tree is not just something nice to look at. It's really important for the environment and for our health, and she's been just a wonderful ambassador in Black and Brown neighborhoods and all across the city, and she's left an indelible mark on this city. And is also a beautiful spirit, and we're sorry to see her go, but also she deserves a great retirement. So thank you and congratulations, Lori.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Harity offers one bill and one resolution. It titled an ordinance submitting Chapter 9, 2300 of the Philadelphia Code to provide greater protections for displaced contract workers.
Verdict committee.
And a privilege resolution declaring October as Clergy Appreciation Month in the city of Philadelphia.
And today's calendar.
Councilwoman Guardier offers three resolutions. A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 5232 Chester Avenue, 5906 Market Street, and 5908 Market Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1511 through 17 South 55th Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 5232 Chester Avenue located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Also, next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions by our members, and our next order of business is reports from committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports 12 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, which is referred Bill Number 230547, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia's zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Mayfield Street, 6th Street, Indiana Avenue, and Marshall Street, and Bill Number 230574, entitled an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions of Chapter 14500, entitled overlay zoning districts by creating the brewery town Sharwood Overlay Subarea, and Bill Number 230578, entitled an ordinance submitting Chapter 141000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled historic preservation to establish a temporary demolition moratorium with respective properties in the area bounded by Ridge Avenue, Rochelle Avenue, Vicar Street, and Hermit Street, and Bill Number 230579, entitled an ordinance continuing the Aramigo Avenue Shopping District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes the east and west sides of Aramigo Avenue from 3300 Aramigo Avenue to 3995 Aramigo Avenue, and certain blocks and streets that intersect that portion of Aramigo Avenue, and for which Impact Community Development Corporation, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, serves as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, and Bill Number 230585, entitled an ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Johnson Street, Germantown Avenue, Rittenhouse Street, and Wissahican Avenue, and Bill Number 230586, entitled an ordinance continuing the Chestnut Hill Business Improvement District in the area that generally includes both sides of Germantown Avenue from 76640 to 8705, and on certain blocks or streets that intersect that portion of Germantown Avenue, plus on Bethlehem Pike between 10 and 105, and within the district boundaries, 200 blocks of West Evergreen Avenue and West Highland Avenue, Benesit Street, East Springfield Avenue, 7600 block of Winston Road, unit block of East Willow Grove Avenue, unit block of Moreland Avenue, unit block of Mermaid Avenue, Mermaid Lane, unit block of East Moreland Avenue, unit block of East Chestnut Hill Avenue, approving and extension to the boundaries of the district, including the 7700 block of Crittendon Street and the 400 block of East Mermaid Lane between Crittendon Street and Stettin Avenue, and continuing Chestnut Hill Business Improvement District Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, and Bill Number 230626, entitled an ordinance submitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions of Chapter 14700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled development standards by revising bulk and massing controls within CMX4 and CMX5 zoning districts, and Bill Number 230627, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by George Street, 2nd Street, Laurel Street, the Delaware Expressway, Spring Garden Street, and 3rd Street, and Bill Number 230628, entitled an ordinance approving a new plan, estimated costs, and proposed method of assessment of the old city special services district of Philadelphia for and concerning business improvements and administrative services to the old city area of the city of Philadelphia, and Bill Number 230629, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Herman Street, Bainton Street, Walnut Lane, and Germantown Avenue, and Bill Number 230630, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Housing Authority to acquire fee simple title to certain properties located in the vicinity of 28th Street to the east, 29th Street to the west, Cumberland Street to the north, and York Street to the south, and Bill Number 230650, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Arch Street, 50th Street, Market Street, 49th Street, Chestnut Street, and 51st Street. Respectfully reports that as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of this day of the 12 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 230547, 230574, 230578, 230579, 230585, 230586, 230626, 230627, 230628, 230629, 230630, and 230650. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Finance, which is referred Bill Number 230654, entitled an ordinance approving a substantial amendment to the Consolidated Plan 2022 through 2026 and Annual Action Plan 2022 through 2023 to add $163,204,000 in community development block grant disaster recovery funding. Respectfully reports that as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading of this bill this day, the Bill Number 230654.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 230654. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. And our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed or have had their first reading. Those bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage at our next calendar. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones as it relates to bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consent agenda for the following bills on second reading and final passage calendar. 230445, 230486, 230487, 230488, 230489, 230550, 230572, 230573, 230577, 230580, 230581, 230582, 230584, 230621, 230622, 230623, 230624, 230625, 230676, 230677, and 230678.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Jones. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, ayes have it, motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling on bills and resolutions on a regular and second reading passage today.
Thank you again, Mr. President. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following bills and resolutions are being brought up from second reading and final passage calendars today. Bills Number 230723, 230725, 230728, 230730, 230731, 230732, 230733, 2305, 230253, and 230570. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is our public comment. But before considering the resolutions and bills, the public comment will go as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage today. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you're not already signed up, you may do so at the desk outside the chambers with the sergeant of arms. Once you've signed up, you'll be called in order of which you've signed up. And when your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There is a device on that podium. When that light on that device turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks and turn the podium over to the next speaker. Today, we have a relatively lengthy list, so in order to make sure that people don't have to have a lengthy wait to testify and to ensure that everybody who has signed up has an opportunity to testify, we will have two minutes. I would ask for you all to please adjust your comments and your remarks to a two-minute limit to ensure that everybody has an opportunity. Thank you very much for your willingness to participate in your government. We really appreciate you coming down today. Mr. Decker, please call the first name.
The first speaker is Connor Deschemaker.
Commenting on 230489.
Good morning. Yes, my name is Connor Deschemaker. Thank you so much for the time to be here. Good morning, Council President Clark and the Philadelphia City Council, the Coalition Manager for Transit Forward Philadelphia, testifying today in support of Bill 230489. Councilmember Squilla's legislation to establish a camera-assisted enforcement system for parking violations that disrupt public transit access across the city of Philadelphia. Stand alongside environmental groups, disability and elder advocates, and transportation organizations in urging immediate action to increase safety and accessibility across our buses and trolleys. As you may be aware, SEPTA recently released a report that revealed our bus system's safety, accessibility, and reliability are severely harmed by widespread illegal parking in bus stops and bus-only lanes. We must change its behavior and reduce dangerous violations. We believe Councilmember Squilla's bill is the key to making our streets, sidewalks, and intersections safer and more conducive to mobility for all residents. Over just 70 days, SEPTA's report showed over 30,000 unique parking violations at bus stops. These affect safe curbside boarding for elders and riders with disabilities who disproportionately rely on public transportation to meet daily needs. Black and low-income workers are- Black and low-income workers are similarly more likely to use transit, and delays caused by illegally parked cars contribute to a penalty of thirty-four extra minutes of commuting, as the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia recently revealed. These effects are not limited to Center City, Market, JFK, Chestnut, Walnut, and the trolley lines. In fact, the city of Philadelphia's own disability representation map indicates the highest concentrations of residents with disabilities include areas such as North Philly and the Lower Northeast. Thus, while we strongly support immediate passage of this legislation, we strongly recommend reconvening with data in six months and pushing towards citywide implementation of camera-assisted enforcement. On-time service and safe accessible boarding should be for all residents of Philadelphia. Thank you for listening, and we look forward to your support of this legislation.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Peter Furch.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Peter Furch. I am also testifying in support of Bill twenty-three-zero-four-eight-nine. I'm a Philadelphia resident, a regular, but I must admit not so frequent rider of SEPTA. In my opinion, one of Philadelphia's biggest problems is that the city does not do a good job of enforcing the rules that they already have on the books. Bill twenty-three-zero-four-eight-nine simply gives the city a tool to better enforce already existing ordinances, nothing more. Enacting this bill will help make public transportation more reliable, timely, safe, and, in a word, usable. I see no downsides to this bill and fully support it. I sold my car two years ago. I rely on my feet, my bicycle, ride share, and SEPTA. If SEPTA buses were faster, predictable, I would use SEPTA over ride share. And better still, if buses could pull over and not block traffic while I loaded my bike on a rack on the front of a bus, I would use combined bus and bike transportation more frequently. Philadelphia must prioritize and promote public transportation for many reasons. I'll talk about just two. One, justice. Public transportation is the only option for thousands of individuals, whether they be poor handicapped or for some other reason unable to drive. They deserve timely, reliable, and safe system. Number two, vision-zero safety goals. Reliable, timely transportation will get people out of cars and cars off the road, making the streets less congested and safer. Buses won't be letting people off in the middle of the street, and vehicles won't be darting around buses into other vehicle lanes or into the bike lanes. There are many other potential benefits, such as helping the city meet their climate goals, there's city budget benefits, and let's not ignore the new revenue stream the city will realize by collecting over fees from thirty-six thousand violations every two months. And again, thank you. I fully support this bill.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Joanna Otero Cruz.
Good morning. Joanna Otero Cruz.
Good morning.
Good morning and buenos dias, everyone. My name is Joanna Otero Cruz, and I am the President and Executive Director of Women Against Abuse. I am honored for the opportunity to speak with you in support and privilege resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. On behalf of Women Against Abuse, our community partners Congreso Latinos Unidos, Lutheran Settlement House, and Women in Transition, and the thousands of survivors of domestic violence we serve, I want to thank council members Brooks, Jones, Lozada, and all of city council for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia. This is a time to raise awareness to a life-threatening issue that impacts one in three women, one in four men, and nearly half of the LGBTQ+ community. Domestic violence is a hidden problem limited to people's homes or private lives. It spills out onto our streets and in our workspaces, schools, and entire communities. It also intersects with the very visible gun violence crisis that's wreaking havoc on our neighborhoods throughout our city. In fact, studies show that when a male abuser has access to a firearm, the risk that he will kill a female partner increases by one thousand percent. One hundred and four victims lost their lives to domestic violence in Pennsylvania last year. Twenty of those victims were from Philadelphia, more than any other county in the Commonwealth. And the vast majority of those homicides were committed with guns, sixty percent. It's a grim picture, but we are not powerless. Together with the city's council's leadership, we have the opportunity to heal and build a safer tomorrow. This October, let's recommit to ending domestic violence in our homes and in our neighborhoods. We have made significant strides forward as the city with the establishment of the Office of Domestic Violence Strategies, but we have miles to go to ensure that all Philadelphians can live safe and peaceful. One crucial way is to continue to support our citywide hotline. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Latoya Maddox. Commenting on two-three-oh-four-eight-nine.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Latoya Maddox, and I'm testifying today in support of Bill number two-three-zero-four-eight-nine. Good morning, and thank you allowing me to testify today. My name is Latoya Maddox, and I'm a senior independent living specialist at Liberty Resources. I'm also the Chair of the SEPTA Advisory Committee and a Commissioner on the Mayor's Commission on Disability. As you can see, I have physical limitations, and I use a power wheelchair to get around. I recently moved to the East Kensington section of Philadelphia. Through Home and Community-Based Services, I receive a monthly pass with benefits on it and use the CCT key card. Liberty Resources is federally and state-funded center for independent living that serves the disability community in Philadelphia, Delaware, Chester, and Montgomery Counties. Our mission is to ensure that people with disabilities can live independently with full access to all aspects in the community. This includes reliable transportation. Next page. The Olmstead Act was passed in nineteen-ninety-nine through the Supreme Court ruling in, yeah. Hold on. I lost my train of thought. Liberty Resources and the disability community are in full support of the camera-assisted enforcement legislation, which was introduced and passed in first reading. However, the disability representation map, based on the U.S. Census data, shows that Philadelphia residents do not only live downtown. Philadelphia also has the highest percentage of residents with disabilities, approximately seventeen-point-four percent. I must attend events in the community for work, parental, and at times for leisure. Not being able to board and exit buses safely on a sidewalk in designated stop curb-cut areas is why I take CCT versus the bus. When I'm needed on any given day to fulfill any job or personal need, I have to take the bus. When a vehicle is blocked, the bus stop curb-cut or the bus lane, the bus has to board me in an undesigned area, putting me and my son at risk of injury. In closing, I must reiterate, allowing the camera-assisted enforcement legislation to just focus on downtown will not combat the problem for SEPTA and the disability community. If anything, it'll make matters worse. I urge you to pass the bill and promptly within six months after its implementation that this enforcement be expanded citywide to all SEPTA's routes. We not only need accessible vehicles, we need accessible right-of-ways to board and exit vehicles citywide. Our safety should not be rationalized just in Center City. Thank you for your time today. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Queen Judith Robinson. Commenting on two-two-one-zero-one-five and two-three-zero-seven-two-three.
Little closer. Is it on? Hold on. Ms. Robinson, hold on one sec. We're not hearing. Is it connected? We good? All right. Please go ahead again. All right. This bill gives me opportunity to talk about land disposition in the Fifth District. As Council President Clark moves to retirement since twenty-twenty, in COVID, we have had more land movement, more land disposition without any input from constituents, or they are being usurped and/or input ignored. We are being politically bullied. Our concerns are not being heard. Neighbors are being viciously pitted against each other, and ignorance is abound. Planning Institute and other responsible agencies are no help. Poor, black, ignorant community is left to fend for themselves with this nonsense. These land deals being bullied down our throats by the President of Philadelphia City Council will tie up the decision-making of the incoming councilperson with these small-minded deals that will landlocked the black homeowners of Strawberry Mansion, North Philly, for the next fifty to a hundred years. Stop this madness. Council prerogative has run amok. We elected a representative, not a dictator. Hell, no!
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Christina Vega.
She are. Yes, she is.
Commenting on two-three-oh-seven-two-eight.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Christina Vega, and I am testifying today in regards to Resolution number two-three-zero-seven-two-eight concerning domestic violence. I represent Love Shouldn't Hurt, a nonprofit organization that began five years ago after the tragic death of Linda Rios, who was a part of the Human Resources for City Hall. After her death and my involvement on the day of those events, it has changed me. Being a survivor myself of six years of physical and mental abuse and being left for dead, her death pushed me to do more, so we continue to raise awareness on domestic violence within our community, not only this month but every day. We assist victims in our community with relocation services, podcasts to educate our community, we provide financial support to our victims, assistance in obtaining a PFA. We hold yearly events to honor those victims and all of those that we have lost and are still fighting the fight. This resolution is important not only for myself as a former victim, but all of the victims that I represent in Philadelphia. Our victims need to feel supported and know there are resources that can help. Domestic violence accounts for almost eighty percent of our deaths in our city. It is our desire that we not only focus on this act of violence this month but all year round. We appreciate the support given by Councilwoman Lozada and her team to provide resources for all of us in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Kristy Crystal Canty.
Hello. My name is Crystal Canty. I come today to talk about affordable housing. I want to turn my houses. I'm located on forty-one thirty-one North Broad Street. I'm actually in your area. You are my councilperson. Crystal Canty. What I like to see done is I like to house the single black women of Philadelphia with children. I want to change my house over. I want you to support me in this. There's a lot of black women and children that are facing DHS right now, that are facing homelessness, and I want to help with a resolution. I too was a part of the DHS issue, but I want my children back, and now I want to come back and help the women that need help. They truly need help. The shelter systems are filled with black women and single children. There's about twenty different families in there when I walked in there, and so therefore I have twelve rooms. I want you to sign me up for the program that gives out the twelve months' funding. I want you to help me fix my houses over. I have never asked the city of Philadelphia to help me with anything ever before in my life. I've been there for twenty-five years, housing homeless people on my own, and this is something that is my passion, and I want to do it. So, I would like for you to help me.
Thank you. Well, I have somebody to reach out to you.
I have some paperwork. I have some things that I've done.
Before you leave, yeah, before you leave, I'll have somebody talk.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council President Clark and members of city council. My name is Gretchen Clausing. I am the Executive Director of Philadelphia Community Access Media, better known to many as PhillyCam, and I'm honored to be here to testify this morning on behalf of Bill two-three-oh-seven-two-eight declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'm also honored to be here to testify in support of a resolution that was passed last week by Councilmember Lozada, Brooks, or introduced by Councilwoman Lozada, Brooks, and Jones, that recognizing Friday, February twentieth, as Community Media Day and honoring public educational and government access channels in the city of Philadelphia. As I was preparing this testimony, I realized it's been over twenty-five years since I first came here to testify in city council, and that was in support of the establishment of public access television. Philadelphia at that time held the dubious reputation of being the largest city in the country without public access television. So, fast forward to today, and I'm just so proud to be here representing PhillyCam since launching our cable channel in two thousand nine. We've become a valued city community resource that provides transformative opportunities for community members to express themselves, learn from one another, and produce and share media reflective of the experiences of everyday people. Last week, PhillyCam joined with our peers around the country to celebrate Community Media Day, to lift up the important role that public educational and government PEG access television channels, often referred to as community television, plays in the U.S. in over seventeen hundred organizations in all fifty states. PhillyCam is proud to work alongside the other PEG channels in Philadelphia, PHLTV, broadcasting these hearings today, the school districts PSTV, TUTV of Temple University, Community College of Philadelphia CCP TV, and LaSalle TV. The work of PEG channels contributes to a healthy democracy by providing services to communities underserved by local news, promoting transparency and open government, contributing important information about public safety and health communications, covering local arts and culture, and preserving a forum for freedom of expression and promoting digital equity and media access for all. The ability of PEG channels to do this vital... All right. Well, I just want to urge council to pay attention to this as the Verizon franchise will be coming in front of you in hopefully just a matter of weeks. And again, thank you for this acknowledgement.
We wrap it up. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Wick Savage. Commenting on two-one-oh-three-nine-six.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President and council members. I'm here to discuss the matter pertaining to Bill two-one-zero-three-nine-six about the foreclosure process. This body needs to do everything in its God-given power to hold off these predator bankers and developers that want to move people out of their homes. The problem you have is most of the folks that are in this situation do not have the power, the political awareness, or the financial ability to fight off this big-time banking industry. Most of these mortgages have already been signed off. President Obama, when he was in office, gave the banking industry big... President Obama, when he was in office, gave the banking industry billions of dollars to pull them out of their debt, and they made an agreement to work with homeowners to help them get out of their situation that they were in. I know from my own experience with my family members, it took me and my family and my finances 10 years to fight off four banks. By the time they finished playing the games, most of the homeowners in Philadelphia are exhausted, and they give up. Councilman Curtis Jones can witness this with the movement of people in his district of losing their homes. We need to do everything in our powers to help fight back this big giant of industry. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Ona Zany Yashitella.
Yeah, delete. Okay, she can afford her testimony to us, and we'll make sure it's part of the record. Next speaker.
The next speaker is...
Hold on, Ms. Decker, hold on one second. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Mr. Wick Savage for once again bringing that looming problem of foreclosures to this body. But I would be remiss if I did not recognize that there was a Marion Tasko, who some time ago raised the issue of predatory lenders in our community, which led to the first mortgage foreclosure moratorium, which a young councilperson came after her and realized that that wave of disinvestment, predatory lending, had resurfaced. And this body instituted a second moratorium on foreclosure. City WAT, I remember, I won't call them out, but the sheriff at the time, when I called them, said, "Is it true that we're getting ready to get the largest wave of foreclosures in the history of the city of Philadelphia?" He hung up on me. I clicked. I mean, that is a true story. We later got together with Judge Rizzo, we got together with the housing advocates, we got together and worked it out with the banks, that we created the Mortgage Diversion, Mortgage Foreclosure Diversion Program. Since that time, over 15,000 homes have been saved. Now, if that wave is raising its head, and we don't have enough housing councils, we need to revisit that. If that wave has come, and they're doing things differently to disenfranchise, creating an environment where people are losing their number-one asset that they will ever have, let's look at it. But I do not want us to ever think that we have not been a part of the solution and will continue to do so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Vaughn.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to piggyback on Councilman Jones's statement, because our former councilperson, Derek Green, wrote the legislation for Councilwoman Marion Tasko, and I worked closely with him, because a former councilperson, Sherrell Parker, was a victim of predatory lending, and that's what brought it to our attention. Please do whatever we can to make sure that that problem doesn't come again, because it caused our housing, caused our housing crash, our housing market to crash, and it destroyed lots and lots of people. So we always want to keep our thumb on that situation to make sure it doesn't rear its ugly head again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Ms. Decker?
The next speaker is Ruby Gittleson.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ruby Gittleson, and I am the Assistant Manager of Uhuru Furniture, and I have had the honor to participate in the Uhuru Furniture Store since 1996. You know, unfortunately, our president, Ona Zany Yashitella, who was here to accept the award, did have to leave early to go speak at another event. But I just want to really, really appreciate Kendra Brooks for that beautiful resolution honoring the work of Uhuru Furniture and the African People's Education and Defense Fund, which has been in Philadelphia for 30 years, and we appreciate, you know, Kendra, your whole team, and the eight other councilpeople that signed on to this resolution. That Uhuru Furniture has played an important role in Philadelphia as a beacon for the fight for democratic rights and self-determination for the African community for the past 30 years, and calling on people of all nationalities and walks of life, that everyone can support African freedom and self-determination, and that that is in the best interest of all of humanity to see African people having control over their own lives and freedom. And Uhuru Furniture has not only talked about that and spoken out for it, but it has walked the walk, it has done the work to change these conditions, including funding programs, like the community basketball court, farmers' markets, the Community Health Festival and marketplaces, and constantly demonstrating in the real world what African self-determination looks like. I see that the light is going on and I need to cut off, but I just want to really, really appreciate, you know, the City Council for your recognition of Uhuru Furniture and gratefully accept that resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Alfred Hutley.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Alfred Hutley. I am the Sales and Operational Supervisor at Uhuru Furniture and Collectibles, and I just like to tell, you know, the council, you know, what it did for me as being a part of something so dynamic, changing the conditions in not only my community, but in all black communities around the country, you know. It changed me to the point that I really know what self-determination looked like, you know, it showed me how to engage with my community, bring people in, you know, it taught me how and trained me how to sell furniture, you know what I mean? And that was a big push for me, you know, I received a feasible salary to take care of my family, you know, I seen generations come there, you know, from grandmothers to mothers, kids, you know? And to me, that is a strong, strong pillar to have in our community, you know what I mean? Instead of seeing the furniture go into landfills, be able to bring it to, you know, the community and have a team that can clean it up, fix it up, sell at a reasonable price, that just, you know, it just really took me by surprise. It made me proud, to be proud to be a part of something that's helping and uniting my community, and I appreciate y'all letting me speak, and again, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Jamie Miller.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Jamie Miller, and I am here today as a domestic violence survivor and to share part of my journey to emphasize the significance of proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Philadelphia. Nine years ago, my daughter and I fled my abusive ex-partner, which resulted in us being homeless. We would eventually find refuge at an emergency shelter operated by Women Against Abuse. Through their program, I managed to rebuild my life in a remarkable way. I later became a world champion mixed martial arts fighter, and I now serve as a fierce advocate, spokesperson, and board member for Women Against Abuse, the same organization that saved my life. My retirement from fighting this year has redirected my focus toward advocacy, education, and forging partnerships. I dedicate a significant portion of my time to mentoring and aiding other victims in navigating the family court system, as well as teaching self-defense where it's needed. My current mission is to elevate my advocacy to a political level, aiming to instigate new policies and reform in the family court procedures related to domestic violence and intimate partner violence. I've also had the privilege of collaborating with elected officials and advocating for new legislation such as SB 919, which was successfully passed in 2018. My purpose is to, excuse me, my purpose is to provide support and empowerment to those suffering in silence, reassuring them that they are never isolated in their struggle, nor to be defined by their circumstances. I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to our dedicated City Council members for your collaboration, your efforts in supporting domestic violence organizations across Philadelphia. Your commitment allows us to work incessantly toward eradicating this pervasive issue in our city, and together we can continue to make a significant impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Lori Hayes.
Ms. Hayes?
Lori Hayes.
Take your time, take your time. Good morning.
Sorry, good morning. I'm Lori Hayes, and I wrote some words. I am just so thankful of the honor today, and I got good stuff to say, I'm gonna make you feel good after this two minutes. It's been an honor and a privilege to be in the circle of city government for 42 years. My connection has been trees, selecting the city Christmas trees for a number of years, doing plant service, setting out plants at events like here in council, the Thrill Show, Mayor's Office, and inauguration stages. We made evergreen wreaths and garlands for the second floor until live greenery was banned here in City Hall. As a fire hazard. I planted bulbs, enjoyed harvest shows, and planted, well, I planted for the Pope when the Pope came in 205. Most of all, it's been interacting in our communities. I even drove a park trolley for a number of years, 42 years will get you a lot of stuff. I helped out on the deer call, because I never wanted the men to do something I didn't know about out there. And when I took this job as Urban Forestry Director, I treated it like a battalion sheet. I wore that big battalion hat, and you call, I would come, and my men, we worked together to get everything done. Wishing I could remove every dead tree in the city, but we're chipping away at it. I'm thankful for this honor. As I look back, there are those who saw something in me along the way. I want to be fast, because I want to name these names. Bob McConnell, he was an old park director. John White Jr., he made a call for me to Bill Mifflin when they seemed like they were dragging, hiring some people, and he called for me. I'm so honored that he got a street name. Family, friends, and associates, Joe Surtain, he saw something in me. Ernesta Ballard, PHS and Park Commission, Mrs. Pat Pollard from Pickett Middle School, oh, I'm seeing a light. My park colleagues, my motivation continues with music. One thing I want to say, many days in the car, I listened to Bill Withers' lovely day.
Thank you.
Because some of them days were ugly, we'd go on the streets, trees are down, but we got through it.
Thank you.
And the last thing I want to say is, know that you're a champion in their eyes.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Antoine Hayward.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the privilege to speak today, Council President. My name is Antoine Hayward, I am a doctoral candidate at the University of Pennsylvania's Annenberg School for Communication. I am here in support of 230728 declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Brooks, Jones, and Lozada. Thank you for that. I'm also here in support of Resolution 230726, which was introduced last week by Councilmember Lozada, that recognized Friday, October 20th, as Community Media Day, honoring public education and government access channels in the city of Philadelphia. Before Annenberg, I was a membership and outreach director for eight years at PhillyCam. I had the privilege of joining the organization in 2010, when it opened its space up at the Painted Bright Arts Center in Old City. It's an absolute honor to be here to reflect on and celebrate what makes PhillyCam such a relevant and valuable special place. I'm proud of what this organization has become and what it offers citizens who reside in Philadelphia and its neighboring counties. It took a long time to make public access a reality in Philadelphia, but I can confidently say the wait and fight for access was well worth it. My dissertation entails researching PhillyCam's history, and my deep dives in the archives have enjoyed finding and reading public testimonies from the 1980s, when an influential city councilmember, whose name I want to lift up today, John C. Anderson, co-presided over public utility hearings. It's important to note that this month marks the 40th anniversary of Anderson's untimely passing in 1983, and I want to acknowledge this connection to his legacy for this important communication access of this utility that we have in our city. I've also been learned how Anderson's connection to public access and this communication resource is connected to the black freedom struggle. I've also been moved by learning how, you know, lots of coalitions fought for having this resource to provide internships and training experience for youth and adult learners. Give local nonprofits and community groups a low-cost, no-cost way to distribute critical neighborhood-relevant information, such as messages and stories raising up awareness about domestic violence. It's also a democratic platform that independent filmmakers and community makers, civic journalists have actively used. So, I can say that PhillyCam is well worth the fight, and has lived up to all of these things that people thought it would, and I thank you for your time today, and I just encourage you to continue to support this important resource in our community.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
Jesse Amadio.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Jesse Amadio, commenting in support of Bill 230489. Good morning, I'm a fiscal transit committee member, and as a Philadelphian who relies on city buses every day, I strongly urge the passage of Councilman Swill's bill to enable camera-assisted enforcement of parking violations that obstruct public transit. We know how it happens, people are looking for a place to park, bus lanes and bus stops look convenient, and they might not be thinking about the impacts, but they are definitely thinking that they can get away with it. The problem is, SEPTA's recent reports demonstrates crisis levels of obstructions of bus stops and bus lanes. In the two-month trial period, cameras detected over 36,000 parking obstructions. This kind of illegal parking makes service slow and unreliable. Just one car can delay over 50 people on the bus, but that's just on a micro level. On a macro level, these individual motorists are contributing to a system-wide disruption that affects millions of Philadelphians, and frankly, makes people not want to take the bus at all. It's reducing ridership, it's reducing profits, and these trends endanger our entire public transportation system. The good news is, we've got the tools to turn this around. In New York City, when motorists received violation from bus-mounted automated camera enforcement, 86% of those motorists never received a second violation. That means they learned, and they learned quickly, not to park in transit zones. Simply making sure that drivers follow the rules could improve the efficiency of our bus network by up to 40%, like we saw in New York. Automated camera enforcement is a no-brainer program for Philadelphia. It's already a proven success in New York and DC, and the two-month pilot that happened here shows that it will be a success in Philadelphia, too. We can have, and we should have, a reliable, robust public transit network, so that everyone who lives here can be served efficiently, accessibly, and safely. Passing this bill today will be an incredible step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Nicholas Crosby.
Morning. Good morning, thank you so much. My name is Nicholas Crosby, I'm here to testify in favor of...
Hold on, let me pull it up, can't hear you.
Okay, cool.
There you go.
Cool, perfect. Hello, my name is Nicholas Crosby, I'm here to testify in favor of Bill 23... I'm here to testify in favor of Bill 230489, in favor of cameras on top of buses. As a frequent SEPTA rider, I find it very frustrating when cars get in the way of buses. All right, cool. Oh, cool, perfect. Perfect, awesome. As a frequent SEPTA rider, especially one who rides the bus, I find it very frustrating when a car gets in the way, especially when I'm on my way to school or on my way to work. There's times where I'm like 10 minutes late, and with the new program of putting cameras on buses, I find it beneficial that we would get cars out of the way. Let me get my notes. There we go. Perfect. As a frequent rider of SEPTA, I'm one that is in favor of smooth rides across the system. However, when I take the bus, problems start to arise, especially when cars start getting in the way. Even when there's clearly a bus lane indicating that cars aren't allowed, this still happens. And with the study of 36,000 violations happening, I see this as a no-brainer to enforce speeding or to enforce tickets getting in the way of bus lanes. Bus lanes are meant for buses. Cars already have enough space in the city, and they don't deserve more space, considering how many people in this city take alternative modes of transportation, including buses. Please consider adding cameras to the buses, as it will not only ensure a smoother ride on buses, but also create an extra source of revenue for the city.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session. Again, I want to thank everyone for their participation today. Next order of business, we will consider today's bill consent agenda. I would ask Mr. Decker, please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon substance objection without debate, that bill will immediately be removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular second and final passes calendar. I will now ask the clerk, please read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number 230445, entitled in ordinance authorizing brandy wine, realty trust to construct and maintain various right-of-way encroachments at 3001 through 3, John F. Kennedy Boulevard, 3025, John F. Kennedy Boulevard, 3025 through 53 Market Street, and 3101 through 57 Market Street rear. And bill number 230486, entitled in ordinance authorizing revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number 308, by striking from the City Plan and vacating Addison Street from a point approximately 80 feet east of Fifth Street towards terminus further easterly therefrom. And bill number 230487, entitled in ordinance amending chapters 12900, parking regulations and penalties, and 122800, administrative adjudication of parking violations of the Philadelphia Code, to revise requirements, limitations, and fines with respect to angle parking. And bill number 230488, entitled in ordinance authorizing revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number 146, by striking from the City Plan and vacating Morse Street from Beach Street to Allen Street, and Allen Street from Morse Street towards terminus. And bill number 230489, entitled in ordinance adding a new chapter, 123600, of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Camera Basing Enforcement System for Parking, Stopping, and Standing Violations That Interfere With Mass Transit, to decrease traffic congestion, improve traffic safety, and address the climate crisis. And bill number 230550, entitled in ordinance authorizing the installation of always stop signs at the intersection of 34th Street and West Allegheny Avenue. And bill number 230572, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 1216 North 29th Street. And bill number 230573, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 635 West Gerard Avenue. And bill number 230577, entitled in ordinance granting permission to Winfield Overbrook Arrow Association in order to demarcate the boundaries of a Winfield Overbrook Arrow District to construct and maintain a clear nylon cord and other ancillary facilities, including a maximum of 100 poles and 45 pieces of plexiglass along, over, and in certain public rights of way. And bill number 230580, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 817 Christian Street. And bill number 230581, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 1524 South 10th Street. And bill number 230582, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 2301 East Albert Street. And bill number 230584, entitled in ordinance amending section 9212 of the Philadelphia Code entitled newsstands, by modifying the list of products that may be sold from newsstands. And bill number 230621, entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Nevada Street between North 51st Street and West Offlin Street. And bill number 230622, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 4629 through 4631 Baltimore Avenue. And bill number 230623, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 701 South 50th Street. And bill number 230624, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 4430 Pine Street. And bill number 230625, entitled in ordinance amending section 9208 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Cafes, by permitting sidewalk cafes to be maintained in certain locations in the 6th District of Council. And bill number 230676, entitled in ordinance amending chapter 123000 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Use of an Automated Red Light Enforcement System to Prevent Red Light Violations by Authorizing the Installation of Red Light Enforcement Systems at the Intersection of Belmont Avenue, Ford Road, and Overbrook Avenue. And bill number 230677, entitled in ordinance amending chapter 123000 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Use of an Automated Red Light Enforcement System to Prevent Red Light Violations by Authorizing Installation of Red Light Enforcement Systems at the Intersection of Kelly Drive and Falls Bridge. And bill number 230678, entitled in ordinance amending chapter 123000 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Use of an Automated Red Light Enforcement System to Prevent Red Light Violations by Authorizing Installation of Red Light Enforcement Systems at the Intersection of 17th Street and Washington Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is, shall the bill pass finally? Clerks shall call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye or nay. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Brooks. Councilwoman Driscoll. Councilwoman Gardier. Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson. Councilman Harity. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilwoman Lozada. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman Phillips. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Thomas. Councilwoman Bond. Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative for each of the bills. The bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 230723.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3112 West Decour Street located in the 5th Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion.
I move for the adoption.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, Resolution Number 230725.
A resolution also naming the 4200 Block of Houghton Street as William Speedy Morris Way, to honor the legendary and impactful coaching of William Speedy Morris, a lifelong resident of the Roxboro neighborhood of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 230728.
A resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Council President, thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution passes. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to acknowledge Councilwoman Kendra Brooks, as well as Lozada and Jones for introducing this resolution on a very, very critical and sensitive issue, and that's addressing the issue of domestic violence here in the city of Philadelphia. And also Councilman Kendra Brooks for taking the lead and organizing this body to date as we all wore purple to acknowledge Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I remember when I arrived in city council in 2011, under your leadership and working in partnership with Councilman, former Councilman Bill Greenley, we raised significant funding to provide 100 additional beds for Women Against Abuse. And so, I just want to thank the members for stepping forward and making sure this is a priority here in the city of Philadelphia, as well as the work that has been done in the past to keep guns out of hand of partners and spouses who carry guns. And so, it's a very, very sensitive issue, as well as making sure that when we're dealing with protections of abuse, protections of abuse orders, right, that we're working in partnership with our sheriff's office and the Philadelphia Police Department to make sure that when that telephone call to the Philadelphia Police Department is made by a young lady, it's taken serious as it relates to them responding and making sure that when there is a protection order against an individual, that the woman or partner is actually protected, and they don't resolve an individual losing their life or shot after the fact. And so, thank you very much. Just wanted my comments to be noted for the record, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you much. Councilman Jones, did you need to, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Remember Johnson brought back the memory in '11, when Bill Greenley, and he fought for the extra 100 beds, which was a time, but we had a rally over in Love Park, which I'll never forget. And the novelty was, how could men be a part of a domestic violence when the stereotype was that it was only about women? And we discovered that many men, many men, were abused in relationships that they had. What was enlightening at the time, too, and brought back memories personally, is that children witnessed this and hurt people hurt people later. My dad, 100% loved him to death, and may God be pleased with his soul, wasn't a perfect man. And I remember watching TV growing up where Lucy and Desi Arnaz, it was okay, when Desi Arnaz got mad at Lucy, for him to bend her over and spank her, and that was acceptable. Or when Gleason used to say, Alice, I'm gonna knock you to the moon. And at the time, that was acceptable behavior to be able to visibly, verbally, and physically abuse women. We have come a very long way thanks to the organization being recognized today, where that ain't, that ain't cool, and it should not happen. So, I'm thankful for 2011, when that was brought to this chambers, and it was raised to a level where we actually put our money where our mouth was. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lozada.
I also just want to say thank you to my colleagues for this resolution. I also want to say a special thank you to those organizations who educate and bring resources to women, men, and others, right, who are confronted and in this type of situation. A special shout-out to Christina Vega, who was here today. She is a domestic violence survivor, but more important, for the organization that she created on her own, and all of the work that she does to make sure that women on a daily basis get connected to the resources necessary so that they can live safe lives and kind of can start over. And to Joanna, and Joanna Altero-Please and Maria Meritza Padua from Women Against Abuse for all of the work that they do in the Latino community specifically, to make sure that there isn't a language barrier and that that community also receives the services that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks again.
Thank you, Council President. I do have some remarks, and I wasn't paying attention, I'm gonna be honest. I want to thank Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Lozada for co-introducing the Domestic Violence Awareness Month resolution with me, and to all my council colleagues and their staff who demonstrated their support for this issue by wearing purple today. As some of you know, I lost my cousin Tiana 10 years ago to domestic violence, and a few six or seven months ago, I lost her sister as well, not to domestic violence, but she also was a domestic violence survivor. I will continue to honor both Tiana and Tamika's memory by fighting for victims of domestic violence, making it resources more visible and accessible, and assuring that survivors know that they are not alone. So, I want to recognize Women Against Abuse, the Purple House Project, and everyone in the city that stands up for survivors for their essential work to reduce the stigma and create pathways to safety. Whether we are aware of it or not, all of us know someone who has been impacted by domestic violence. Domestic violence is a health, a public health crisis that impacts people across race, class, gender, sexuality, and ability. Domestic violence often happens behind closed doors, and survivors often face intimidation, threats, and shame that prevent them from speaking out. It can be hard to recognize, and even harder to talk about. By declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we commit to ending the silence surrounding domestic violence and send a clear message to survivors. We see you, we value you, and you are not alone. So, thank you to all my council colleagues for their strong support.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for this very, very important issue and bringing it to the light so underreported and underfunded. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Mr. Decker. Let me see which one we have. Please read the title of 230730.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1511 through 17 South 55th Street located in the 3rd Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gardier for motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that motion carries, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 730731.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, D's conveying fees simple titled at 5232 Chester Avenue, 5906 Market Street, 5908 Market Street, and 6025 Washington Avenue in the 3rd Council matic district.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 7, I'm sorry, 230732.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, D's conveying fees simple titled at 2106 East Cumberland Street in the 1st Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 7, sorry, 230733.
A resolution recognizing Governor Shapiro's executive order to create a Behavioral Health Council in which state leaders, local governments, and community providers join forces to design and implement a statewide action plan with aim to address how to effectively deliver exceptional mental health and addiction care services.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 200253.
An ordinance amending section 2303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Salaries of Specified Officers to Establish Salaries Based on an Annual Compensation Plan.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Jones for an amendment to Bill Number 200253.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that-- Thank you, Mr. President. I move that amendment to bill number 200253, which has been circulated to members of the body be approved.
It's been moved to probably second, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, bill number 200253 has been amended, and bill number 200253 will be placed on our next reading calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 230570.
An ordinance amending chapter 11700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Read Away Management by amending section 11705 entitled Construction by Adding New Provisions Relating to Notice.
This bill has been read on two different days. The question now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Brooks, Councilman Driscoll, Councilwoman Gardier, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, Councilman Harity, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Lazada, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman Phillips, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Thomas, Councilwoman Vaughn, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 15 and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution recognizing the 10th graders at Hill Friedman World Academy for being featured in the HBO documentary Stand Up and Shout: Songs from a Philly High School, introduced today by Councilman Phillips. Introduced today by Councilman Phillips.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I, I moved, I move, I move for, resolution. Thank you. Adoption resolution, excuse me.
It's been moved to probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Elizabeth A. Murphy for her exceptional leadership at PICO and her subsequent retirement after an outstanding 16-year career, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I enthusiastically move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and enthusiastically seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating the Champions of the Week, the artists of Legacy Reclaimed, a 7th Ward Tribute, for their efforts in promoting and showcasing the history of the Black residents of Philadelphia's historic 7th Ward, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating the life and memory of our friend and colleague, Robert Chris Goy II, introduced today by Councilman Jones, on behalf of Council President Clark.
We will, chair recognizes, Councilman Jones.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to affirm this resolution by a standing moment of silence.
Thank you. An awesome friend and an awesome colleague, gone too soon. Thank you. Mr. Decker.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold public hearings exploring the effects of recent pharmacy closures, including Rite Aid, in the city of Philadelphia and the impact this has on prescription access and vital pharmacy health services for senior citizens, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes, Councilman Jones.
Yes, briefly, Mr. President and colleagues, this was introduced not just by this single action of Rite Aid falling for bankruptcy, but a series of cause and response, ranging all the way from Kensington to shoplifting in Center City, to take a look at if the culmination of all of these pressures are causing our valuable partners in Rite Aid and CVS and others to leave. And we need to get to the bottom of it, get to the bottom of it quickly. One of the companion pieces is the three-stroke structure-out resolution that makes shoplifting the kind of violation that a person can be banned from a store, so that we can actually not lose stores in underserved communities that our aunties and uncles rely on for their prescription meds. So I move for the adoption.
It's been moved to probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Lori Tree Queen Maple Hayes, on the occasion of her retirement, for her vision, leadership, integrity, and unwavering dedication to curating Philadelphia's parks, trees, and greenery over her 42-year career of service to the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Brooks.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Brooks.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Uhuru Furniture and Collectibles and the African People's Education and Defense Fund for defending the rights of the African community, providing affordable furniture and home goods to Philadelphians, providing jobs, job training, and volunteer opportunities, and committing all profits to supporting economic development and self-determination programs for Black communities across the country, introduced today by Councilwoman Brooks.
Chair again recognizes, Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring October as Clergy Appreciation Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman Harity.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Harity.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes, Councilman Johnson.
Hey, thank you, Council President. Just a couple announcements. One on Saturday, October the 28th, at Elmwood Park in southwest Philadelphia, we'll be hosting our Peace Not Guns Fall Festival. It's an opportunity for individuals to come out for a day of food, fun, entertainment, and most importantly, resources to stop the violence in our communities. And again, that's going to be Saturday, October the 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Elmwood Park in southwest Philadelphia, 71st and Beavis Avenue. And so I just wanted to make that announcement for all those who are hearing to come on out and participate. And also, on November the 3rd, at 16th and South in South Philadelphia, we will be naming the 1500 block of South Street on Ronald K. Washington Way. That's in honor and memory of Ron's ribs. I don't know if anyone have ate Ron's rib back in the day.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. It started in South Philadelphia on South, on South Street. And we want to honor the life and memory of Mr. Ronald K. Washington, who was an outstanding African-American small business owner. So before my vegan days, I would go down there for my nana to give me some good ribs. On a serious note, also, all of my colleagues are just talking amongst ourselves as it relates to the census gun violence that are taking place here in the city of Philadelphia. And we just got noticed that a SEPTA bus driver was murdered on the bus, which is totally unacceptable. And we were already gonna talk to Kathy Gilmore Richardson last night and Morgan Seifus about making sure we do a briefing with SEPTA regarding their current negotiations with TWU. And it's making sure if a strike does take place, that we're in preparation in all areas and making sure that we continue to move the city of Philadelphia forward, but also making sure that as they go through the process of negotiating, that the TW workers are in a space that a just contract should move forward. And obviously, on the issue of public safety is something that should be taken serious. We've seen this too many times here in the city of Philadelphia. And so we're gonna be meeting with the Philadelphia delegation, as well as representatives of SEPTA regarding how TW and SEPTA move forward. But obviously, this issue of public safety is gonna be a part of the conversation. Because at the end of the day, you should have the opportunity to go to and from work without fear of losing your life. And before I had the opportunity to actually own a car, right, I think like everybody else inside this room, we didn't have a family car growing up, just to be quite frank with everybody in here, but we had SEPTA. And so I'm, I'm a frequent, a frequent rider of the Broad Street Line. I was a frequent rider of the 17 bus run line, as well as the 2 bus line. That's kind of pretty much how I got around the city of Philadelphia, particularly from Point Breeze and downtown. But I've never in my life thought in a million years, I was seeing people being shot and murdered on our public transportation system. And then it makes me even think about my two boys, Isaiah and Elijah. At some point in time, I'm gonna have to allow them to go to and from school on their own. And with this current environment, you know, I just feel for all the parents who have children going to and from school on our transportation system, as well as all of the riders who are citizens in this great city of Philadelphia. And so with that being said, those are the comments I want to note for the record as Chairman of Transportation and Public Utilities, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Sad day, sad day. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to invite folks to join us on Saturday, October 28th. We're partnering with the DEA and the Sheriff's Department on a prescription takeback. We'll be collecting expired prescriptions that folks have sitting at home at the Juniata Boys and Girls Club at 1227 East Cayuga Street. Please join us. We'll be there from 10 to 2. I'd also like to recognize one of our students from Ariana Bracetti Academy, who's here today joining us to see how we conduct city business. She's a 10th grader, Jessenia Mella.
You ready to stand up? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things I wanted to say this afternoon. And the first is that there's a lot of things happening on Saturday, a lot of really great events. But I want to encourage people before they go to those events that they can start off their day early with a street renaming on the 5200 block of Wayne Avenue for Reverend Melvin Floyd. And we all remember Reverend Floyd as the minister who drove around with a casket on the, on the van. And his daughter, I know Mary Floyd Palmer was here, she was here. I don't know if she's still here. She's still here, back here. My good friend, who jokingly used to say how her father would take her to school and drop her off right in front of the school door with the, with the van with the casket on the top. But we're gonna have a great, great ceremony this Saturday morning at 9:30 on the 5200 block of Wayne Avenue, which is Wayne and Hansberry. We're gonna have former mayors, and we're gonna have former members of council and current, and members of the state legislator and our congressmen. So we certainly hope that you can join us this coming Saturday. You know, just in thinking about Councilman Kenyatta Johnson's comments earlier regarding the shooting death of a, a SEPTA employee, a SEPTA bus driver, you know, it's not lost on any of us, especially since we just went to a funeral earlier this week for a police officer, that these are people who died because they showed up at work. They showed up to work to help us and lost their lives. And, you know, I'm certainly hopeful, you know, I know I get accused sometimes of beating up on SEPTA just a little bit. I have like, just, just a tiny bit. Because, you know, I, I have someone very near and dear to me who works for SEPTA. And we hear all kinds of things that are happening currently in the transit system. And so the idea is that, you know, when we talk about things that need to happen, it's not about, you know, being difficult or being hard on SEPTA, but really providing the quality of service and care for our ridership and for our SEPTA employees, to make sure that they're safe as well, that they're not, you know, chasing people down and, you know, about fairs and getting into an argument with folks. And it's just not worth it. But there are things, we think, that can be done to make everybody safer across the system. So we certainly hope that SEPTA will be taking a look at improved safety measures and we stand at the ready to be helpful in that matter. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is that as a Chair of Public Health and Human Services, I'm beyond enthusiastic that today we passed a resolution supporting Governor Shapiro with the very much needed Behavioral Health Council, which is going to deal with mental health and mental health issues throughout the entire Commonwealth. We have a real mental health problem here in the city of Philadelphia. I don't think that anyone can deny that. And so the work that he's doing, the work that he is gonna be putting into this council, I think is critically important, especially for a city like Philadelphia. So we really look forward to making sure that, you know, the challenges that face those who are, who are dealing with these situations are addressed. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for being so supportive on this resolution. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to acknowledge one of our colleagues who reached an important milestone in turning the big 5-0. Happy birthday, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, and may you experience and share many, many more on this earth. I remember those days way back when, and I, and I just felt so old at 50. But life is just beginning. Life is just beginning. And you could begin to lie about your age at this point, you know. But last night was phenomenal. Your team did a great job in celebrating you. And I had a wonderful experience and a great opportunity to share it with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Halfway point of your public service. Fifty more, sir. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to extend my condolences to the family of the SEPTA bus driver who was shot and killed. It's just a horrible thing to happen for that family, for, you know, SEPTA as an agency, but also for everyone who experienced that. I frankly would never want to get on a bus again if that, if that happens in front of me. And I feel badly for the riders that have to deal with that trauma, probably for a long time. And certainly, we have to do something about this, right? It's crucial that our public transit agency is safe. You know, my own child uses public transportation to get to and from school, as do many people in our communities. But I also, I think it's about pushing SEPTA, but I also think, you know, we talk about collaboration a lot, and this is also about collaboration, right? What's happening on SEPTA, whether it's gun violence, or opioid use, or people who are homeless, is a microcosm of what's happening in the city. These are major issues that we have to get a grapple, a handle on as a city. And yeah, we push them, but I do think we need to have sort of the cooperation of the city with SEPTA to get a handle on all of these issues, so that the city can be safe again, and so that public transit can be safe again. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilwoman. That concludes our speeches by the minority and the majority members of council. And with that, chair recognizes, Councilman Squilla, for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 2nd, 2023 at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved to probably second, the council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 2nd, 2023, 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.